It's about clock to everybody. If you please, right. Counselor will be here with the implications tonight. And Captain Harlow will provide the prejudice, lead us in the pleasure of leading.
Okay, we'll please bow our heads. Lord Jesus, we pray for our country and we thank you for your blessings in your name, Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance.
To the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight at seven o'clock Tuesday night meeting, which has been changed to five o'clock Thursday night. Welcome everybody who's here. The reason for our change, of course, was that we were voting precinct Tuesday and there was a lot of confusion, a lot of people here at the time, so we saw it better. Change. Thank you for being with us tonight. Counselor Andrew was unable to be with us tonight, but he is listening in via assistance. All right, first item I have here is public comments. I have nothing listed here. And I don't see anybody who wants to make a public comment, so we will go to the next item, which is adoption of minutes. We had October sixth, twenty twenty, regular council meeting and October twentieth, twenty twenty, council work session. I'll entertain a motion to adopt both of them as written unless somebody notes any changes or if they have some reason they want to do them individually.
Mayor, would we adopt both sets of minutes as written?
Okay. Motion is second. Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? You notice I changed that a little bit, didn't I?
You did.
Yeah.
You changed it up on us.
That's right. Okay, motion passes. Thank you all very much. All right, old business, there is no old business tonight. New business, item number three is approval, police chief retirement agreement. Counselor Evans, I believe you can have that one, sir.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. I think what I'd like to do, if I could, is just read the letter that Chief Haddad wrote to us. So that everyone can hear what he had to say.
Uh, thank you.
Dear Mayor and Council, I am writing this letter regarding my coming retirement on ten twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty. It is with a heavy heart and after careful consideration that I have decided that it is time for me to make this change in my life. It has been an honor to serve the citizens of Centerville during my tenure with Centerville Police Department. I have had the pleasure to serve alongside the bravest men and women in the armed forces. And I will take those friendships and memories with me forever. And then following that is the separation agreement that we have with Chief Haddad. I won't take the time to read the whole thing, but I think everyone has had an opportunity to take a look at it. And with that said, I move that and accept this agreement as written.
Second.
Motion is second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? It passes. Thank you very much. Yes, it's really a hard thing to do, take something like this, but I appreciate where he's coming from. And it has been an honor to have him serving with us. And we really wish him the best in the future. We really do. Okay, item number four, important information, chip twenty twenty one grant, Council Evans and Economic Director. Governor.
Yes, sir. So in front of you, Mayor and Council, you have the request for qualifications and proposals for creating an administration of a community home investment program, twenty twenty one chip grant. And this is off of the suggestion of the Centerville Housing Team, which is affiliated with the GIC program. But we are hoping to work with residents in a very targeted neighborhood to help them do home improvement projects in order to make sure that those residents have quality housing to live in. This application we have looked at doing in the past have not been very competitively placed in the competition with other communities. And so this year we are more competitive because of some changes made to the application. We scored seventy-four out of eighty total points. I think this is a great opportunity for us to really do some home improvement projects for our residents. And just wanted to give a point of affirmation, we have started the procurement process to get a grant specialist onboard for this project. I think that using a consultant really helps make sure that our application is as maximized as possible on the competitive side.
So in addition to us hiring the grant specialist, are there the other required that we require in the city? Or do we not need to be getting today at this point?
No, that's fine. I think it's a great opportunity for us to just talk about some of the big points. So for this fiscal year, there's a two hundred and fifty dollar application fee and a fifteen hundred dollar fee to a grant specialist who will write the application for us and will have a twenty-four month period to spend all the funds. They will help in the management of the construction and the fiscal administration of the grant that the City of Centerville receives. Like I said, it could be up to four hundred thousand dollars for us to spend directly to our residents. There'll be an application process. People have to meet certain income levels in order to access this grant for the home improvement projects at their home. And then in the future, in the next two years, we will also have to budget, I believe it's four percent of the total project costs to the grant specialist in order to compensate them for financially managing all of this.
So it gives us an opportunity to help out some of the citizens in our city who could use that assistance.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments on that? Sounds like an excellent opportunity for all citizens out there. All we can do is pray that we can get this.
Yes, sir.
Great grant. All right, next item we have here is change order request number two of the Center Park, Counselor Evans and Director Hope.
So anytime you have a major project like we have going on down there on the corner in Center Park, as you go along, you do find things that come up that you either may have missed or something happens and something needs to be changed or moved or repaired. And so that's why we're here on this. And if you would go ahead and direct her to give us details on the change order.
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, you guys have a hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-six and forty-two cent change order request for the Center Park project, thank you. This is some finishes, like the rubber base, some additional name speaking, some requirements by the Department of Public Health for compliance with our splash pad and also the restriping and resurfacing, really the repaving completely of the two parking lots that are right there on East Church Street for the Center Park patrons to utilize. Of this, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, fifty thousand of it was budgeted, eighty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-six and forty-two cents was not budgeted. Fifty thousand of that and five hundred dollars is for the paving of the parking lot and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six, forty-two is for the park. So that roughly comes out to this change order request comprising of seventy-six percent of the parking lots, sixteen point four of it is health department requirements for our splash pad. And then around seven of it is some additional finishes, like the rubber base and name speaking, as I mentioned. You've had a few days to review this and I'm just, after consideration with the City of County Harrison and also Director of Operations Brunkfield, which is asking you this evening to approve this change order request so that we can finalize some of the details on Center Park.
Have we identified where the additional funds are coming from?
I spoke with Ms. Harrison and Director Brunkfield at our department head meeting this morning. It's general fund unassigned. And that is for a total of eighty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-six and forty-two cents.
Okay, just want to entertain a motion.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we go ahead and go move forward with the change order request.
A second. That motion is second. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir. We would like to say we knew that the improvements for the parking lot was coming because we made that decision a long time ago. So now, as we move along, we progress quite a bit and we're at that point. So I'm really excited about that. And as I drive by the park and I see the playground going up and the splash pad going in and all the sod going in, I'm just getting excited about just being able to go out there and hang out. And I hope everybody understands too, because we're gonna have a lot of fun for many years in Center Park. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anybody else have any thoughts? I'm looking forward to it too. I saw a lot of things going on out there. The playground is being built.
Yes, sir.
And I guess the final thing on the splash pad has been done?
Our final board for concrete for our splash pad will be tomorrow morning and playground should be done on Sunday. But the surfacing needs to go into the playground and considering it's still a construction site, we're encouraging visitors not to visit with us just yet.
All right, thank you. Good point. Glad you brought that up. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Okay, it passes. I will sign this. Item number six is police department update, Counselor Evans and Captain Harlow.
So I'm gonna go ahead and let Captain Harlow do the show.
Sir?
Yeah. Okay, here is my basis of this. When we come over to assist you, we found that there were some hours that some of your police officers did not have supervision. Not that they couldn't do the job. It was just a concern that if we got into a situation, a heated situation on the liability side of it, we felt like that they should be supervisors that are on duty at all times with these patrol officers. With that said, you currently have twenty-two positions at the police department. And we've worked with the twenty-two budgeted positions within the department without going back outside to create any new positions. And I'll get into that in just a little while. Obviously, you've got your chief that would be the salary. You have two patrol commander, a patrol commander, which is a lieutenant on an hourly wage. You have investigator administration and admin administration also. They would oversee that as you see on your organizational chart. Then we have obviously patrol sergeant, supervisor of the shift. You've got a patrol corporal and then you have a patrol officer. With that being said, the patrol corporal will basically be a patrol officer unless there's an absence in the sergeant. Then the corporal would come up and playing that command to watch over the other officers. You've got three positions on the investigation side. You've got investigator sergeant, you've got an investigator corporal, then you have an investigator. Now, this third investigator I feel real strong on is that obviously he will do the duties, the investigation with any other crimes like our current investigators do now. However, I would like for that investigator to specialize on narcotics and drugs. I feel like that we need to be ahead of the curve on that and let them take the role in the narcotics. Not saying that there's a bad narcotics problem in Centerville, but every county and every city has narcotics. And I feel strong that you should look at that real close. Also, I would recommend that during council's work sessions coming up for next year's budget, that as Centerville grows, you may want to look at four more positions as police officers. So that way you'll have four officers on the road at all times. I think that's very vital with issues that we have today and the way things are today. I think it's, you know, and as growth occurs, I think you need to stay ahead of the eight ball and look at those positions for your next year's budget. You have any questions so far?
Any, Counselor, any questions? What I had, the way I understood you were talking about, it sounded like there's four positions in investigations you're recommending. But I want to see three on this chart.
Right, three, three investigations. The sergeant, the investigator corporal and the investigator that would specialize in narcotics.
Okay, okay. I see what you're getting at, all right. And the other thing is, we're looking and Counselor, want we go ahead and talk about the administrative?
Sure.
Aspect, okay. We're looking at the two administrative personnel being under the chief directly. And mostly we're concerned with that because there's a lot of freedom of information requests to come through there. And that information shouldn't necessarily be shared beyond people in that office right there and the chief.
Okay.
That's our thoughts on that.
Yeah.
We're not saying that's firm. Just thoughts on that.
So you're saying that you do like the two lieutenants with this and not the captain and under this chief? Is that what you're saying?
That's not it, except for the administrative positions in the front office that work directly for the chief.
I got you. Okay, yes, I understand completely. And that's not an issue. Yeah.
Yeah, and the animal control and code enforcement works, they work on that lieutenant over there.
Sure.
It's just those two administrative positions should be on the chief.
I understand what you're saying and, yes, I concur to that.
Yes. Okay. Mayor, is it worth, you know, with an earlier item on the agenda tonight being Chief Haddad's retirement, that, you know, I think we're looking at a search for, you know, our next full-time chief of police. Is it worth discussing whether or not we should lock into any new world chart structure before we complete that search? Because I think that if I was looking to come into this position, I might have a difference of opinion. I might have a different leadership style. And so I don't know that we want to lock any potential candidates into something. Not that this is a bad system, but everybody is a little different. And I don't want us to, I just wouldn't want to put us in a position where we establish a lot of positions and make a lot of changes. And then we're in a position in six to eight weeks where we're looking to shift all of that again. We've had enough, certainly had enough transition that I think that as much stability as possible might be in order, Mayor.
So, this is nothing more than just an idea.
Oh, it's a proposal.
This is not a proposal.
It's a proposal for restructuring, yes. And we come over, Mayor wanted us to look at it and sit down and come up with a proposal to restructure the department. And it was our understanding, like I said earlier, that you did not want a captain and under the chief, that you would rather have the two lieutenants. So that's how we based our.
So this is a response to Mayor's request to provide a proposal. If you're looking at the current situation and how would you suggest being asked, what would you do? Go forward. What would be your idea?
This is their idea. Here's in Chief Rape.
Right.
And Chief Rape, the two have been working together on this.
Right.
And this is the idea they've come up with for us to consider. You know, we're not voting on or anything, it's.
Right. That's all I was trying to understand.
Right, we're just considering it.
Right.
Well, it's certainly something good to have in our pocket. It's a fine suggestion. It makes sense to me. I just, I wouldn't want to, uh, I wouldn't, like I said earlier, if I was walking into this, I don't know that I would want to walk into a freshly tweaked leadership structure. And also I wouldn't want that to potentially affect the hiring process. Somebody who's a good candidate might say, I don't know, this looks like this is already, I'm coming in, working off of somebody else's system. I don't know that somebody would see that as a good slot or limit our options for the future. Chief, Captain, I appreciate your hard work on it. This is, I said, it makes sense to me, but I'm not gonna be the chief of police.
Sure. And I understand completely what you're saying, Counselor. But there again, looking at this, you know, obviously there's morale issues over there. And I think with showing the people at the police department that we're moving in a direction or beef the morale and bring the morale up and give them a sense of security over there by going forward. And I understand what you're saying.
I agree with you. I think that's a good idea. And I think now that you mentioned, you know, moving forward, I think that we should have some discussion about what the process is like for the search for a new chief of police. I know we have hired a number of them in recent past and we've had some discussions about what that might look like. And I don't think there's any time to waste for us to begin looking. Like I said, we, like you said, we need the, we have some morale issues and some challenges and nothing fixes that better than moving forward. I agree with you completely. So, Mayor, what is the current plan for how to move forward with the search to select a new chief of police?
Well, just until a few days ago, we thought we had a chief of police. So, I mean, when I asked this proposal, we had a chief of police and we expected to come back to work.
Okay, yeah.
So, that's what I'm saying. I mean, this was.
Yeah, I'm just not adding confusion to it. We're, this is, he's simply bringing something that was asked for back to the mayor and council. Say, hey, you asked for this for a good, and so I think Counselor, right? It brings up a valid point, you know, that we do need to, you know, looking forward, we need to sort of, we need to be able to say what we're gonna do.
I agree also. I also think, I also believe, as having been a leader of an organization in the past and have to come into an organization that was already set up, there will be some discussion about structure when that person is hired. There may be some changes or there may not, but we do need something going forward.
And I feel that whoever your new chief is, that it would attract them more knowing that he's coming into a structure that's already structured with a command staff and he would feel more comfortable. I would if I were applying.
And you didn't make this up by yourself. This is something that you certainly have had a group of people helping you.
Well, let me be clear. I'm not saying this is a bad suggestion. I'm not saying that, I'm not trying to rebuke anything that the captain said. I just wonder if we, if we're not gonna spin our wheels a little here. If we keep, we'll make this change and we'll make this change and we'll make this change and we'll make this change. And we're just, we're sort of, we're killing any continuity that we could have. I think that, how many, can somebody tell me how many days we have left on the contract that we have with Captain Harlow?
December fifteenth.
Okay.
Right.
So we're.
We may have to negotiate with some.
About twenty-five days, so.
In the inside, yeah.
They've advised me in the past that we, it's gonna take longer, it's gonna take longer, Counselor, all right. You know, at this point also, I think we also need to discuss going out and looking for a new chief, how we're gonna do it.
I guess that's what I'm asking. Is it appropriate for us to have that discussion? Because item on the agenda is police department update. That's pretty broad.
Yeah. I believe we can do that, Cam, yeah?
You know, you're not taking any action on anything.
Yeah, we're not taking any action. We're just discussing what we're gonna do. We may, you know, it's just a hiring process. How do you want to go about the hiring process?
Counselor, that's forty days.
Forty days, yeah, okay. Thank you. Well, you know, I think that with forty days being left, that there's, even if we do, I think we're certainly probably looking at having to talk about extending that agreement for a period, maybe the next thirty days. But there's no reason for us to delay. And I say that also factoring in that we have an additional council meeting in the month of November and then one in December. And then we typically forego that second council meeting in the month of December. So.
Yes, we have some business.
Unless we have some business, but it is, I would not want us to put us in a situation where this gets kicked down the can till mid-January or February. You know, I want, wants to be able to take our time. We have had some conversations about what that process could look like. I think we're gonna, if I understand correctly, that we have to advertise it in a particular format, Becky, is that correct?
No.
Would you not?
No. I think the days may be of advertising in the local newspaper will probably pass. There's the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police. There's our own social media. And then GMA also has something called Marketplace and that's a free place for you to advertise. Those are probably your three best sources unless anybody has another suggestion. Captain Harlow, I mean, that was just kind of my thoughts unless you got offer something else.
Or you could go through maybe HCCG also.
Yeah, certainly. Yeah, I think that's the, those are the good places to go to look for to get applicants, certainly. I think once we, once you have a pool of applicants, I think it would be better for us to have a more defined process as to what it looks like to cull those applicants and make the final selection. I think one thing that was suggested was to maybe to impanel a group of some other chiefs of police to sort of filter through those and narrow it down to a smaller number to then bring the mayor and council to allow them to make a final decision. I think that's certainly a reasonable option to look at moving forward. But I welcome any discussion or thoughts on that. I just, I think that we, we don't gain anything by delaying in moving forward here. It's because everything is slower right now. Between, everything was slower before the election started, right? And with COVID and with that, it takes five letters to get the post office to deliver a letter right now. So the quicker that we can begin this process, the more expedient it's gonna be.
I think we can begin the process tomorrow by placing ads and, you know, that's gonna be the start. That's gonna be the start. And then after that, once we receive candidates, it's just a matter of determining how they will be vetted. And then once we determine how they are vetted.
I guess that's the question I'm asking. What, how do we believe that those candidates should be vetted?
Well, if we put ads out, it's gonna take a couple of weeks before we get any responses back, at least probably longer. I think between now and then, we could have, come to a decision on how we want to vet them. Say at the next meeting, we can actually put it on the agenda?
Sure.
That's all I can reasonable think to everybody?
Sounds perfect.
Okay. In the meantime, I've asked our city accountant, Ms. Harrison, to give with Captain Harlow and talk about these positions and see what the impact is on the budget and see how we can work with the budget on that. Okay? She's gonna look at what the positions mean, what the dollar might be for the rest of the year and how much money we already have in there. And then if we need additional funds from someplace, how we can find them. Everybody agree with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, Captain Harlow, that's a wonderful job. I really love this structure. I think it covers a lot of things in there that we, some holes we didn't realize were there. And I appreciate that. We will take it into consideration.
Okay.
And get back with you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. That's a great job. It really is a good job. Okay, comments from the council? Close two.
No comments from me, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, close three.
Just glad to see everyone is doing well.
Thank you, Lord. Close four.
So, I'm glad we have a safe, I'm glad that we have a safe Halloween in our city. I haven't heard anything negative out of it yet. I think, I know I saw some trick or treaters myself. And so it was nice to see us be able to support our city and do the things that we normally do. That's it. And also, hey, I'm excited about the park and I'm excited about the fire department. So looking, watching those two properties go up and so, you know, encourage everyone to keep an eye on. So looking, watching those two, uh, properties go up and, uh, so, you know, I encourage everyone to keep an eye on it because it's coming.
I agree with you. I try to drop by the fire department every single day just to see, I can see movement every day. I see changes over there. I mean, see a lot of changes. I can tell there was a change the last time I went by there. So I'm really, very excited. That's on schedule where it's going. And of course, the park is absolutely looking forward. Looking excellent. I appreciate that. I do not have anything else tonight, so thank you, everybody, for being here. We appreciate everybody. And thank you to the city of Centerville for being such good citizens. We had a great bowl of turnout in our district here.